What allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
I hear a motion to adopt agenda.
I so move.
My second.
Motion made in seconds, I'll give you favor.
Bye.
Guest speakers, we'll go with Ginger Castro. Let's go ahead.
And also Betty Riley from SCOWET.
Betty Riley.
Did you all get something in your packets here?
Yes.
I have fancy colored ones if you'd like them. Are you able to put them back if you want one more of your own?
Well, just to give you a little bit of background on why we're bringing this project forward and the work that we've been working with, the Lake County Economic Advisory Committee, of which Lakeview has a couple members along with Jim Walls and others that are on that committee. A couple of years ago, we met to identify some of the key issues and things that we needed to be working on here in Lakeview, and one of them that came up from several venues, including the Forest Service and the hospital and others, was the need for workforce housing and that we had, we needed to work on housing issues in the community. And so we started looking at ways that we could do a housing needs or a housing study for the community, similar to something that had been done in Klamath Falls. And so we talked with the Leyland Group, which is the consulting group that did a housing needs study in Klamath Falls, and they actually had used funding through the Brownfield Program to do their housing needs study. And so they talked about that. They gave us a scuffle work and a cost estimate of about $18,000, and we looked for ways to be able to fund that study and really couldn't come up with anything. So about three or four months ago, a Leyland Group, the consulting firm out of Portland, identified another consulting group that works on proposing grants to EPA for Brownfields. And Brownfields basically are a, it's a program, it's a program, you know, that's used across the United States to identify areas that have contamination or potential, or the potential of contamination, and it's a way to revitalize communities by fixing up those properties, by going in, doing an assessment of what might have been done on the property that would, that needs to be cleaned up, or actually identifying that the fact that there is no contamination. Mill sites are common, fill-in stations are very much a common Brownfield area. Dry cleaners also, formerly dry cleaning operations had a lot of issues with, you know, not complying with the, how they disposed of their chemicals and things. So where, what we had a discussion with the new consultant, which their name is Cardio, and they are actually looking at, they are environmental consultants that work across the United States, and they have offered to come in and work with us on applying for the EPA funds. Now, I currently through SCOWET am sponsor, or co-sponsor of a program, very, the same type of program that the city of Klamath Falls has applied for. And so they're in about their second year of their program. They have got used the environmental assessment funds, they got the grant for a half million dollars, and they have been able to go out, identify specific properties that they can do assessments on. And they're also, as I said, have used the funding to do some of these studies, the housing study, and they're also looking at identifying industrial properties. So they've gone through and used the funds in ways that have really complemented the work that they needed to do as a community. So I'll let Ginger talk some more about where we're at and what we're proposing to do.
Sure. On one of the handouts that you've got at the top of the page, it says EPA Brownfields Assessment Grants, Interested in Applying for Funding?, question mark. There's a little box down on the left-hand side that has a little more academic description of what a Brownfield, Brownfields are, and just for your information. And this page is also important because it gives information about the EPA assessment, Phase One and Phase Two Grants. So where we are at this point, and Roberta has been involved in at least one of the conversations that we had with Cardno. There are two people there that work specifically just on this type of project. One of them is the grants manager, and the other one is sort of like the field facilitator person who comes out and works in the community and with the landowners on these projects. So right now where we are is looking at the possibility of engaging you all as the Town of Lakeview and the town council to join with the, with Lake County and also with the city of Paisley to develop consortium to go forward with looking at making one of these applications. It's $500,000 for three years, there is no match, which makes it financially very palatable. Cardno comes in and does all of the facilitation work and introduction of the project to the community and works with the consortium to develop the information that's needed for the grant. The application comes out in September, it's due the end of December, the funding happens in the spring of 2018. Three-year project. We do not need to have the landowners on board at the, you know, for the purposes of the grant, because the grant is about educating the community and the landowners about what the project is. It is not a witch hunting expedition to go out and try to find, you know, problems with properties. It is to go out and assess what is going on with the properties, and we have, I'm estimating around 60 acres, and Darlin can probably say a little bit closer, of potential Brownfields projects here just in our north, the north industrial park. And then throughout the county, we've got a couple more. One example would be Bobby Carlin's mill site in Paisley, there's about 35 acres there. And then there are some spots of defunct gas stations like Don's Market and the old Leathers Oil that's on the south side of town, possibly the site here in the middle of town where Rose Cleaners was, we don't know exactly what it is. But we can name any sites that we want to and then begin to work on that as a part of this grant. As Betty said, how this all came about was looking at what we have got going here or not going here with our housing issues. What has happened in other communities that have participated in this is repurposing those industrial lands into recreational brown housing, lighter industry. We are probably at a place where we can accept the fact that we're not going to have six mills here, and even the properties that are currently owned by, possibly by Fremont or Collins Mill and some of the other properties that have some industry going on in them, they're large pieces and they're not fully using the entire piece. And in order for some of them who are interested in selling or getting their places on the market, or they are, these pieces of land, there is some concern by potential buyers about what are we looking at, because those sites have been used for industrial purposes for many, many years, as you all know, probably 40, 50, 60 years, and we don't know what contaminants could be there. Some potential buyers and/or funders for those buyers may require that their pieces of stuff be cleaned up. And if they can get a jump on it and get some assistance after the Phase One, Phase Two process here to help them with cleanup, if that's, you know, if that happens, then that would, that would be really, hopefully be attractive for them. So at this point in time, we have made the same presentation to the county commissioners, requesting that they become a part of a consortium effort, and they have agreed to that, they did last week. We've also made a presentation to the city of Paisley, and they're taking it under consideration, and they're meeting tonight for their final vote about participating. So we're coming to you to answer questions and to invite you to be a part of this consortium, because we feel like it could really be a good benefit to the Town of Lakeview to take a look at these sites and start a process, a community process of repurposing and getting them into a condition that may be more favorable for lighter industry or even for what sort of brought us to this, and that would be housing. I'm going to stop now, if anybody's got any questions, or Ken, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Like, like, have a good time. Basically, it's just approaching willing landowners. Any landowners that are not, I don't want to assess them. But if they are willing to sell them, they would be willing to sign them, and the prospective buyers have watched out there, then the landowner would know whether it's a clean site or a site that needs to be cleaned up. Hopefully, most of them will be clean sites. This first phase is just an assessment, and again, it's ruling landowners. And that's part of this company, we come and talk to the community and to the landowners, explaining the project more fully, you know, does the landowner want to go and know what's out there, number one. So if it has another purpose of that property and wants to sell it, you know whether it's clean or not clean, and the prospective purchaser or future use will know whether it's clean or not clean. So it's a way to get the certification saying this property is clean, or possibly, it may not be clean, but this project will help facilitate a future Brownfield grant to clean it up. So it's a willing process to just identify the conditions of the property, and it's totally willing by the landowners.
And we are under a bit of a timeline here, that's the other piece of it. Cardno would like to come, probably the first part of August or so, to begin the process if the consortium members are willing to participate, so that we can be prepared when the application comes out. They have a lot of experience and they sort of know what is going to be in the application, so that we can get a jump on gathering the information and getting forward with all of that. You know, while it's not going to cost us any cash to participate in this, obviously, you know, wouldn't want to make it sound like we don't have to do anything at all, because we would have to cooperate with them and help them gather information and be available to them for, you know, the meetings that they will facilitate around how they want to assist us in putting together the application and the project, so.
Now having a consortium, that's, the county could do solo just for lands that are in the urban growth boundary or whatever, but the amount of money would be less, about half or so. But we want to be addressing all the potential. By having a consortium, two, three parties, it increases that funding up to 500,000, and again, there's no match. But we would have to designate one entity to be the coordinating person. In other words, if the county went in, and Paisley went in, and SCOWET went in as a consortium, if you had, SCOWET has the managing, you know, paperwork and all of that, the coordination of it, but we would only be in the mode of assisting.
EPA accepts, I guess you're looking at a community-wide grant, because site-specific, if you're doing that, then you have already, you have identified that.
Correct.
The EPA accepts a part of the community from here to Paisley?
Yes. As a matter of fact, the project in Klamath, the city of Klamath Falls, they all work the lead, but the county is also participating, and they're looking at properties up in Chillicothe area and all the way up into Crescent. And so there's already, Klamath County is not quite as large, but it's about the same size as Lake County, and they're all, they have accepted that. Several of my counterparts who have the state, the economic development districts, I know up in the Baker County area, they've used this funds and they've had really good success at getting some projects that they've been able to put back into use again. In Klamath, Klamath County actually has a property at the entrance of the Esplanade and go into downtown that owns Metabell, Meto, it was a, Dairy, Metabell, that is got asbestos issues and it's, so they've gone through and used these funds for the county to actually look at what needs to be done to that property. And then the state of Oregon, that does have a grant and a loan program to assist with the cleanup work. And when, before the Balsam building, or Fred Stone's, the Egyptian building, before the city decided to, that they needed to remove the, because of the engineering issues they had, they used, they got a grant to do a complete assessment of that project and to go in and also drill holes to identify if there was any contamination on the site and to alleviate the issues that were before they acquired the property themselves. So it's a program that, it really does help to put back these vacant properties that are, I don't like to use the word "light," but in many cases, there's lighted properties that you can then put back into use again in communities, and it helps revitalization of it.
So if Paisley opts not to participate, then it would be significantly right here in Lakeview, is what it would be like.
It would be, yeah, and that's fine, too.
When I say county, I used to phrase urban growth boundary, they could be in place in Paisley inclusive of by the color, that's outside the city limits, so. If somebody up in Silver Lake has a property a question and wanted to join in on it, that would be underneath the wing.
You don't want to head Christmas Valley into it, huh?
Yes, we do.
Would you?
Absolutely.
Okay. So where are the money's going to go then, if you're taking those areas in? Because they do have some major funds.
Well, we'll talk with, the funds would be up to 500,000, they would have three entities.
So the housing is going to go where it is?
No, we identified where the property is and prioritize it.
Right. Basically, it's setting the stage, in most cases, this money isn't development money as such, it's more of...
It's a grant, you have to see if it's feasible.
Yeah, and kind of giving you a better picture of where things, where you could do things and what, it gives, it's a lot of information that you can't really afford to get without having those grant funds, and that's been part of our dilemma, is just finding funding to do some of the work we need to do.
It would be up to the landowners in Christmas Valley or any place on the county as to whether or not they wanted to participate further past the assessment, the Phase One and Phase Two, to apply for either the grants or the loans, you know, as to whether or not they wanted to go further with it. So the $500,000 is collected for the entire area and not just going to get funneled to the places where there might be a greater need.
The way it also works over is that we have an advisory committee, a technical advisory committee, and so anyone that was interested, you know, from the council or from the town could be on, would be a part of that, so that it wouldn't just be driven by the consultants, it would be local folks that would be identifying where we need to do it.
Can we have some council have any questions?
It's not a good idea.
So the question that we have is, does the, does the town want to participate? And when would you make a decision about whether or not you wanted to participate? That's our question.
Couldn't be done before our next council meeting, huh?
You want people on the ground here, though, in August first, you said? Because you have a grant due September.
Yeah, we've got some flexibility, but they are, you know, they're sort of waiting for our process to happen here and make our decisions before we schedule them to come in, so we're...
But the grant has to be filed somewhere from September to December.
In December is the deadline, yeah.
But in your, at your next meeting, you know, we don't need a resolution or anything, we just need a consensus to participate and the willingness to write a letter that goes as part of the grant application, that you are a, that you are participating in that decision.
And is there any liability in doing this as far as going out and assessing that would fall back on us or Paisley or the county? I mean, is...
No, no, the program is such that it's basically, you know, in many ways trying to avoid the liability issues and identifying, and it does go through the, a Phase One assessment basically is just a paper trail, and I, you know, you probably have worked with some of those through the town when you're working on projects. The Phase Two is actually going in and sampling and doing that work, but then it also identifies who has the liability. And in most cases, you are, if you are the original owner and the person and part of the contributors towards the contamination, then that is a constraint. I know we have that issue with one of the fill-in stations, we've been trying to get back into use over in downtown Klamath Falls, it's because the family that owns it is a trust now, but they have a direct relationship to the fact that the underground storage tanks were leaking, and so they have, they are the ones with the cleanup responsibility.
And if the landowner says, yeah, I'd like to know whether I have contaminant or not, and go in and sample it, and it shows up, yes, there is, the question came up in Paisley, is EPA going to come down and hammer them at that time? My understanding is not, but if they're ever going to develop it, like their housing or something, they would have to know about it anyway, and by going through the process, they'd have a better chance of getting a grant of what's been done.
The way the federal and the state environmental laws work, everybody in the chain of titles technically liable for environmental contamination. What ends up happening is you have a right of action against your predecessor if you confine the person. Probably the lot of these sites is, you shield dry cleaners and stuff, that did that, it is 20 something years, there's nobody left.
Where they're deceased.
Exactly. So I mean, there's nobody, so often these, that's why Brownfield was created in the first place, to make sure that you can get some of these sites usable, because again, there's some industrial sites and some of these areas, especially back east, that have been foul for 40 or 50 years, because they were some, you know, used some chemical they could use back in the 40s or 50s, can't use now, and they're worth it's right now.
So do we need extra information? Do you need extra time? Do you want a consensus now or at our next meeting?
If they have a consensus, then you could just directly, for us, write a letter, right, to go in the application, and you target the consortium.
Do you want to ask for a consensus?
You know, ask for a consensus on this project from the Brownfield?
Yes, I agree. Are you?
Yes.
Done.
Thank you, thank you very much. You will be hearing from us shortly.
Oh, I'm sure.
And I would like to always reiterate, it's a willing landowner, we're not going out there and tapping ground without permission. If the landowner wants to know what his condition is, and this company will explain the process, and if the landowners said, I'm not interested, it's not okay. It's totally a willing process.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I want to, the Oregon Business Association of Red Rock Minefields request for industrial development funding.
And that's just to let you know, the next step, if they apply to business or if they are in this full bonding, so hopefully, keep our fingers crossed, because they exhausted all their, their resources pretty much on part of those key funding.
Would it be helpful if we wrote, you know, a letter of support written to the business or county?
I would, again, it kind of goes and shows.
It says, "Any comments?" Oh, that's lovely, so we love that. I think that would be a good idea, right, to give support.
We have a letter here, an informational letter from the Crisis Center, that Gloria now has been appointed to the position of Acting Director of Lake County Crisis Center.
She's a good person.
And we have a letter from Rush Fire regarding their merging with another company.
So this will be the agency doing our audits from now on?
And it'll still be involved.
It'll still be involved, but I hope that it's a part of it.
Okay. We'll move on to public comment.
I don't want to have my back to anyone, so, former teacher, you never lose that. Anyway, my name is Barbara Robison, my address is 18661 Tunnel Hill Road, and I have been a resident here for 12 years, and during those 12 years, I have spent 12 summers at the pool. I go swimming every single day, I do lap swimming, and I'm also known as the Candy Lady, because I use my recyclable money from my bottles to buy the lifeguard goodies, because I'm so in love with them, they're great people. Now, we are truly blessed to have the quality of outstanding young men and women that we have in our lifeguards. Many of them are leaders of their classes and are active in student government and campus activities, and we are lucky to have the best of the Lakeview student body as our lifeguards. Many of our past lifeguards have gone to college, graduated with degrees in teaching, nursing, science, et cetera, and three of these happen to be Sharon's grandchildren. And I am lucky enough to say that of the two, of the three, two of them are still my best buddies. I kind of have a clingy tendency, they become my grandchildren after a while, and they're amazing, her grandchildren are just amazing. I'm also very supportive of our swim team, and when children are active in sports, they stay out of trouble. As a former teacher for 30 years, I know this is a fact of life. In supporting the team, I'm concerned this year about how cold the water is. When you have a healthy child who jumps into the water at seven in the morning and comes out looking like a blueberry popsicle, because they are so cold, action needs to be taken to rectify the situation. The geothermal water system and the pumps have some issues, I'm not knowledgeable about that kind of stuff, but some work needs to be done. Also, the pool covers are very poor quality and don't keep the pool warm. They are essentially large pieces of bubble wrap that just don't work. Getting a better quality pool cover would really help. If you expend more money, you're going to get more quality. I feel that hotter water in the pool would equal more people wanting to come and swim, which would mean, hopefully, more money for the pool. I've asked my friends to come, no, it's too cold. I'm 73 years old, and if I can get... I'm 73 years old, and if I can get in that pool every day, everybody should be getting in that pool and getting exercise, okay? I don't want the younger children who are the potential members of the swim team not to join because it's so cold. We have a large group of brand new swimmers now that absolutely, you know, it takes effort for them to get into that pool. Once you're in it, you're fine. But you know, to get in is really hard. And actually, just today, I was at the bank, and one of the tellers told me, she's new to the town, and her son had belonged to the swim team from where they came. And he would not join this swim team because the water was so cold. So that's one that we missed, and I hate to see that. So please put the pool at the top of your agenda this year. You will be rewarded for your actions by many happy pool people, especially me. And I thank you for letting me speak to you and representing the Blueberry Popsicle Kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. That was real interesting.
Thank you. I aim to please, and off I go to swimming.
Well, and just for your information, we have had discussions during the last couple of meetings about what we can do to make it warmer.
Okay.
And the pool covers, you know, I can get here until September, but that is a big issue, so.
That is. If you had a better quality, I know it's more expensive. I'm even willing to go to the other, like the Lions Club or the Rotary. I'll be a speaker for you, although I'm only here until October, so, because I'm a snow buddy, or a snowbird. I was calling a snow buddy.
But anyway, I just wanted to let you know that we have just had some discussions, and we're going to.
Thank you. I certainly do appreciate that because I love those kids, and they deserve better. Ms. Morris, let's jump ahead. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Next on the agenda is department reports. Father Legionoff here. Dennis is not here. Can we go to Travis?
The only thing I'd like to add is that handout I gave you regarding the next phase into getting the property on North H Street, I sent out a email of interest two weeks ago. We've moved on to the next stage. I've sent out the second email of interest today, so I hope to hear back sometime this week so we can move forward with that.
North H?
Yeah, correct. That's the one we had the meeting on, the warehouses from Fish and Wildlife.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Thank you, Travis. Next is Public Works, Jeff.
I don't really have anything to add to it unless someone has a question about something that was on the report. And our project down on South Ninth Street is ongoing, and it just looks like a big mass of chaos, which is a pretty accurate description, I think, but it was a complicated project, and they got pretty much started on both ends and the middle. I keep on to them about fixing their cuts in the roads and maintaining that, but it's just really is rough. And looking forward to having that patched back up, which is very busy, but.
Okay. Basically, what Daryl had in his report about the South Ninth project. Okay. We'll go, any old business. There are none. We'll go on to new business. Ordinance 858, establishing time, place, and manner of regulations for marijuana.
What ordinance number?
Oh, five.
Eight fifty-eight? Yeah. Eight five eight.
What's that?
Eight five eight.
Yeah. I'll have here. Eight fifty-eight. I'm trying to rest my paperwork. Do I hear motion of it?
Just for clarification, this is exactly what we discussed in a previous meeting, is moving any potential liability lawsuit or anything.
Correct, and also dealing with the odor concerns you guys had and the window and the odor, that odor test and the window covering, Ben does it, Lincoln City does it. And there's a lot of different jurisdictions that use variations of both of those, so that's where that language came from. So this is, the language about window coverings and stuff is from multiple different jurisdictions around the state.
Just as an update on page five, who's Dawn's name supposed to be?
No, it is, and we talked about that already.
Yes.
Yeah, we have it. You corrected that.
We will.
We will.
And then corrected the ordinance number by eight fifty-two. It was November 25th to 14th instead of 17th, so.
I make a motion to read ordinance eight fifty-eight by title.
I'll second.
Vote in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay.
They need to approve the motion.
I would move that we accept ordinance number eight fifty-eight and ordinance allowing the location of marijuana facilities within the town of Lakeview, establishing time, place, and manner of regulations on such facilities, providing penalties for a violation thereof, and refilling ordinance number eight fifty-two in its entirety and declaring an emergency.
Do you want to hear a second?
Do you have to add with corrections?
You have your correction.
Corrections are noted if you're.
I'll second that.
Vote in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next one is for Resolution 907. CDVG Grant Water Master Plan Update.
And this is one we've been aware of for a little bit, that we had received for grant. We couldn't actually start to work until July, but this is all the paperwork for the $20,000 to move forward with updating the plan.
So I think I've missed everything that you've talked about on that.
Okay.
But I've read through it, but.
Okay.
Anyway, so do you have to put a bid out for the first one?
We don't.
Going to, or we just do myself on that?
Because we have a contract engineer.
Okay, so he can do that.
Right, right. We didn't, or, you know, you can choose to do that, but it's, you know.
Right.
But it's pretty much standard because he is our contract engineer.
Right.
And it's under a certain dollar amount. If he's seven, 50,000, $70,000, and it's over that, then you have to do that.
Yeah.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 907 in the matter of approving Lakeview Water Master Plan, updating financing contract with Oregon Infrastructure Finance Authority through Oregon Business Development.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I got a quick question. Do we, according to the grant, do we get any of that money? Like, sometimes there's admin costs, like the two percent, that won't go to the, straight to the. I have other questions. We can call for it.
And I do, I need to have some signatures, or if you can wait for later.
Any motion being made? You second it? Vote in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, so everybody voted.
And we can have a notice here for fallen heroes ceremony in memory of Jeff Ellis, August 4th at 11 at McDonald's Park. Who is putting this on? Is this through the VSW or this?
It is. And I thought they had been talking to you. Have they talked to you about it?
No.
Said you're going to be there. Of course, I was though. The guy's local, but.
Really?
Didn't you talk to Mr. Ellis or Dan?
Okay, that's no problem. I'll be here.
You missed this.
And then, yeah, go back.
I missed NC check wagon. On the front page, right?
Oh, I missed one, okay. NC check wagon flag celebration Saturday, July 22nd at 10:00 PM.
Eight hundred AM. AM. You want to be out there at dark.
Been a long day.
That's good to fish.
I've never fished.
Funny.
So that would be putting the flag down.
We have, you know, we received the funding from City of Austin Power for $2,500, and then we bought the flag pole, the crew put the base for the flag, the concrete stuff last week. And then with the pole up, and then we'll raise the flag, that's it.
Is there any other thing in this whole ceremony, or are we doing anything extra for the people that are there, or is it anybody speaking or?
Well, yes, we, Will Cahill, Will, he's speaking. And I thought I would grab some cookies or something to have a little, down there that morning, and maybe some water, because it's too hot for the coffee that kind of makes. And then the family can't be here, many of the Nichols family. So in that, we met, well, Jeff and I met with Jack Nichols and Mark.
Mark.
Mark, right. We met with them a couple of weeks ago to exactly tell us where they wanted the flag and stuff, so we met with them and everything. And Deb Hills has been working on a couple of things to clean it up and some other ideas. Did we do anything with that deck or, you know?
We're going to leave out till fall.
Okay. Yeah, because they kind of wanted us to do some, something with the deck that's not bubbling up enough when it gets moisture on it or something. Anyway, they're working on cleaning it up. So we'll have a simple ceremony, and I asked Ray Sims to come, and I haven't heard back, but I, he wanted to be involved with that, so.
Okay.
Ray, are you going to be here with that?
She invited Mike.
In a second.
Mike Patrick is here.
Okay.
Yeah, cool.
Does it mean he knows when he's moving back?
He is back. He is safe. Their U-Haul, I seen him in safer. Their U-Haul will be here tomorrow, I hope.
You missed that, too.
Okay, move on to, we have Lake County Chamber of Commerce has two requests for street closures, one on August 5th, which is North Allen Second, north of the Lakeview Lockers. How far north?
Well, see, that's the thing. I haven't attended the Torrey Outback meetings, and that's what that one's for. So I need clarification from Marie Tucker, because I heard that there was a problem with Second Street being closed as well, because it's a busy street.
I do have concerns. Her and I talked about this earlier today. They're talking about closing all of, they're closing Second Street and L up possibly two blocks. And Second Street's a pretty busy street. I think we'd have a hard time closing that one. We'd have to see what the need is before I think we'd just agree to that one. I mean, most areas is pretty easy. L Street would be not too hard, but Second Street would be, have a higher impact. So I do have concerns.
Talk to Torrey Outback people.
Yeah, so there's a meeting next week with Torrey Outback, and I'd like to talk to them before I, I guess, further ask for permission on that road closure and get clarification.
What are the dates on that?
That is August 5th.
Okay.
And I believe it'd be in the afternoon, because they'll do their ride first, and then their.
Barbecue.
Their barbecue is at Lakeview Lockers. That's the idea of having that area closed off.
Yeah. So is it timed?
Yeah.
Is it busy in the afternoons like that on a Saturday?
Second Street's really busy. I mean, we'd probably have to set up a detour if we were going to close Second Street, so that's just something we'd have to consider.
Where we've got people living there, up and down that street, how are they going to get to their rooms if it's all closed off?
Yes. I understand totally. I didn't think about it until I spoke to Travis earlier, so I get it. I'll meet with Marie and Chris Bishop, and actually, I have a meeting with Chris Bishop tonight, so I can talk to him tonight as well.
Okay, great.
And then the other road closure I would like is F Street in front of True Value and Les Schwab, this Saturday at like 3:00, 4:00, and 4:30, I would like Airlink to land their helicopter right there in the street, for families to look inside of it and get a little feel for what it's like to have Airlink. There'll be representatives here to talk to them about Airlink, to go.
Land on that closed street.
Yeah, they'll land, if I get approval, they'll land that street, they'll land right there in the street, which I spoke with every business in that area, and they're fine with it, because it should only be 45 minutes to an hour tops that the helicopter will be there. And he'll have EMS block the street, so I have a phone conference with them in the morning to make sure that there's enough EMS people to make sure the road is blocked, because they can't land without EMS.
I think we'd also have to block North Fourth in front of the Mexican restaurant right there as well.
So that whole triangle like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I spoke with, I spoke with Best Western, that other motel, Les Schwab, True Value, and the Mexican restaurant, and they were all fine with it. They said, really, it's going to attract people either way, landing a helicopter in the street.
Yeah.
Okay, well, who's them? Two. Want them separate? You want them?
No, we aren't.
We need to wait on the.
One is the.
So we won't have, oh, yeah, we will have them on the, whatever, on something.
Yeah, we still have.
Yeah. And this on the 15th is in coordination with what event?
It's in coordination with the Back to Blue. We have teamed up with all the police departments to do a relay race that's throughout Moose Park, and then after that, street tacos at.
I'd be harder than wait.
We have the ladders today. So the idea behind it is, is.
I'm sure.
To help the city raise money for free bike helmets for the children, for the children in the community that don't, can't afford helmets. So we're looking to make close to, we'd like to hand over a $3,000 check from the Chamber to Travis, so he can buy helmets to protect the kids in our community.
I think it's worth mentioning, too, that you have done this in the past, but you have a grant or an arrangement with Walmart.
Well, we've, we've used several different avenues for funding this over the years. It originally started, I want to say, back in the late 90s due to a motor vehicle accident. And at that time, we were charging $5 a helmet. When I first started as a school resource officer back in 2005, I, at one of the daily days, I got in contact with Debbie Miller with ODOT. And we started talking about the helmet program that we had and that we were losing, that we were running out of money and it was going to stop. And at that time, she said, hey, I've got federal grant funds. And so we carried federal grant funds from then until about 2014, and then they ran out of funding. At that point, the police department, we used our advertising funds one year to buy helmets. Then we, at that time, we applied for a grant through Walmart. We were granted $2,500, I believe it was, from Walmart, which carried us for a couple of years, and now that funding is out. I'm actually down to about one large helmet, so this is coming at a perfect time for our community, because it's been great. I mean, we give out a couple hundred helmets a year to our local youth and parents alike. And so to keep that continuing, I think is a great thing, you know? So, yeah, this is perfect timing with the Chamber to do this. When they approached me about doing a fundraiser and asking me what could that money be used for, it was the first thing I thought of, because I really am passionate about keeping kids safe, so.
Was it followed by a dinner?
Yes, so Travis and his officers, the OSP and Sheriff's Office are having a few of their men and their wives, and they will actually be your waiters at the Elks Lodge. And so it'll be a tip a cop dinner, so all of the tips made at the Elks Lodge as well is going straight to the helmet fund. The idea behind it was, is we've watched Facebook, obviously, and all the negativity towards the police department, all of the police departments, actually, and we decided that we wanted to do something to take the negativity off and support our police department. And we asked Travis what he thought the money should go for, and he said, buy helmets. And that's when the obstacle course came up and the tip a cop dinner Travis brought up. And so we decided that we would help out, and it was, it was going to be, it's great to help the little kids in the community. I mean, there's kids that I see every day riding their bikes without helmets. And it'll be street tacos, beans, and rice, nothing too complicated.
Are you guys cooking?
Nothing super complicated.
No, we are not cooking. We are simply serving.
Yeah, they're not cooking, and the person that's cooking is actually donating her time, so we're not paying her at all to do the cooking for us. She's doing it for free, and that's. She's doing it for free and that's her donation to help us, so.
And from talking with, with Brianna and Jessica, well, there's been a lot of community support for our law enforcement. So, you know, not everything on Facebook is true and we do have a lot of support up there and I'm very proud.
And as soon as the dinner's over, everyone else is welcome to stay at the Oaks Lodge and there'll be a DJ from 8 to midnight as well. So we're trying to, trying to help everywhere, I guess, is the best way I can describe that. Help everyone.
Also at the Seroptimus Park portion of it, um, we've purchased things to hand out to kids. So there's coloring books or activity books and pencils and stickers and stuff to give to kids that show up. And so we'll have those available for the kids as well. You know, again, it's about community support. Um, all of my officers will be there because one of the complaints I've heard over the last six months is we don't know who the cops are anymore. You guys have hired so many new people, we just don't know who they are anymore. So the community wants to meet our new law enforcement and know who they are and, and approach them and talk to them, you know, on a one-on-one basis. And that's why I'm encouraging all of my officers to be at least at that noon Seroptimus Park time, just so people can come and talk to them and meet them and find out who they are and where they're from and, and information about.
Also, Barb Robinson that spoke before, she's actually wearing a Black the Boob Back, the blue T-shirt that the Chamber has bought and selling and all of that money as well is going to the police officers. So if you guys are interested, we have women's and men's T-shirts. And the idea behind the T-shirts is to wear those T-shirts in, during Saturday's event to show the support behind it. And we have plenty of T-shirts left if you guys want to come down and get one.
That's Chamber?
Yes.
Have you been doing a lot of advertising on this?
Yes, it's on the radio, it's in the newspaper, it's on Facebook, it's, um, we've had people drop flyers off in Alteris and Plymouth. Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, do I hear a motion to close the F Street down for this event?
I would make a motion that we allow them to close as long as the chief is in line with that.
Can we make sure on there, Ray, we're closing F and North Fourth between F and G?
Okay. Can we hear a second on that?
I'll second.
Motion favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now this next one, somebody needs to explain this sidewalk chalking the Lake County Extension Service.
They want to do this for the eclipse, you know, dramatic side for, you know.
Obviously for solar.
Yeah, for the solar eclipse. And it's just, uh, it's just, I don't think it's a problem, but I, you know, I don't.
See, it is a problem because it's that chalk is watching.
Yeah, it washes off, but I was trying to figure out, you know. It's up, it's up the park on Seventh Street, on either side of the street, on F Street, leading to the Fairbridge. Somebody's got a lot of, lot of chalking to do.
Well, F Street.
Corns are sports.
That's another.
That's right.
Well, I guess, I guess I need.
The highway, you know.
Yeah.
Changes.
Need a motion on this one?
I, I approve the sidewalk chalking requested by the, by the Extension Service.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have, uh, we're going to need information to see what they're doing today.
That was today. Did you have a meeting?
We did have a meeting today. It was about two hours this morning.
It was a very long tour.
But it was very educational and, and we, you know, we are starting, um, you know, to get meeting back together because some changes need to be made in September, October, no later in October. So we, you know, talked about all that. And, uh, Tim Kessler and Kimmy Cannon and.
Peter.
Peter from DQ will be, um, on that meeting to kind of set up the agenda for the next meeting, which will be the same as our council meeting at the end of the month, which is the 25th. And it'll be at noon here. So we're going to have to work on that for lunch. Um, and just kick it off so we can get the word out. Some of the concerns were, you know, a lot of people still don't know, we never did put the, um, flags down at the, uh, schools. Uh, we're talking about maybe, may, getting some made that we could actually put on the pole, the flag pole, so that every day when they put their flag out.
Oh, red, green.
Yeah, red, green or yellow. Um, it'll, uh, give a little bit more advertising, allow, out in the county. You know, the town's doing pretty well, but this is countywide also, so we really need to work on getting.
I was in attendance at that too. I'll just make a comment that Mr. Brewer, Peter Brewer, he was a nice gentleman and I felt a little more secure. You, I know both of you know Rachel Cicada and who took over Larry Cawkins for the, the Air Quality of DQ. But I guess Peter was Air Quality and at one point the top level here in Oregon. So he's, I guess, well qualified, be stepping into the position and seems to be supportive of like, you know, the next program himself.
So he will be our representative?
Like Larry Cawkins and Rachel Cicada.
But it was a convenient, very education. I've talked about it, but I haven't been involved with it. You know, so. Yeah, I agree. If anybody wants to come to it, I think Darwin, you were on the list.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to fly and go to the county.
Right. So, but it is going to be on the 25th at noon here.
For the next meeting? Let me know, I have a time.
I will.
This next one is SB 344 Alt Terrain Vehicle Snowmobile Discussion on Estatube Crossing Over the Highways. I know Rob Gordon's been working on this for eight years. And finally passed.
So what is the, uh, well, now, we have a, the what?
They're, they're allowing it, but I don't, I'm not sure what the specifics are in the Senate Bill.
Is it, is it in this?
This whole thing?
But we need to establish, what Rob had asked us to do is to start, we don't have to do it today, but to start, because it's two years before it's actually ready. Is that what you said?
Two years before it goes into a death, is that?
Well, I'm not, he said, but I thought it was. Anyway, but what Rob asked the, the council to start working on.
I think it's then, it'll be next year, it's January. It'll be January, excuse me, it'll be January 1, 2018.
Okay.
Is it, when they, when they don't declare an emergency or just sort of a passage date, by default, it's the next year. So get some time.
But that's not a lot of time. To establish crossings, you know, like are we going to do it, Roberta Avenue, are we going to do it? You know, where the people, and I don't know sure where all those snowmobiles or, or people go on ATVs, is it just up board? I mean, we know those are things we need to kind of identify. So we probably need to get some information from Rob about where he suggested.
Well, Rob, Rob mentioned to me about, they were talking about putting ATV crossings up here on the highway there by Missouri and on Cadmus Road.
What about here? But that's what we need to.
That's what we need to do. ATV certain areas, would you allow it?
I think Center North Second would be a very big one. Again, North Second is a very heavily traveled thoroughfare and it takes you right into the business district. So I think North Second Center would be appropriate.
How many we want and where they will be.
Yeah, I think we'd probably need a work session.
Would you?
We got pretty in-depth in our discussions before.
We kind of need to read, read this to.
Yeah, there may be some stipulations there were before and who could locate those.
Well, I think from what I read in that, it designates, it says you can cross at a highway. I don't know that it requires a posted crossing. So it says at a highway intersection, which.
But that would be.
If that does, that means any highway intersection.
You were one of the initial entities or the town with support of this because they came down here from the state organizations and asked for our approval and, and support. And we pretty much gave them the idea that we would be very open to marking them very well. Because I think that when you've got vehicles like ATVs or motorcycles across country that are not lit, they're not, you know, they're really not street ready. But our community was friendly enough to allow that to happen because of, and what the main thing was is to cross from the eastern United States across to right here, coming down Bullard Canyon. A trail that is nationally designated to this point.
Yeah, that's the transamerica.
From that point, they had nowhere to, to go onward and join up. And so that was the main thing that we were having to look at in the crossings is how they could get from point A to a point where they could cross to go, I think it was to join, perhaps in the Campbell Lake area or that direction.
I know it goes up through Crater Lake and.
Yeah.
Goes up through there.
So that was the, the main thing in the crossing, just to, to accommodate them and then not to, you know, just be wide open. But that may have changed and I haven't reviewed the 944, so I don't know.
It helps drivers know also.
Yeah.
And how they're watching every intersection. But, yeah. And then people, you know, that, you see a lot of people driving in the town and stuff, just, and so that, you know, everyone will know where they can go.
We also, the same, the same government agencies are, are people that were with those organizations that were supportive of it and asked for our support, also told us that they would have funds available for signage. So we need to check on that because that was, that was something they promised that they would have funds for.
I think Rob, you, Rob, was, uh, when you talked that they had the funds.
That might be through Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
It was, it was not through the Oregon Department of, uh, Death and Recreation.
I mean, one of the biggest concerns about the way the law was previously written, where you couldn't cross at an intersection, you're, you're having people cross someplace that's not normal. And so the, a normal place to see a vehicle is at an intersection, where there's stop signs and traffic control devices. And, I mean, ATVs even, I mean, are no different than a, say, a street bike, really. And so you, when you expect to see a vehicle crossing somewhere, you expect to see it at an intersection with a stop sign. Not coming out of the police department and down out of a driveway. And, and so it, it's, I, I've read that, um, I did read it. It, the way it's in that legislature is a little hard to read sometimes. But, um, I did read it and I don't recall postings being required in what they've passed, but I'll have to reread it.
And actually it does. They, they have, they have designated crossings at places that this is, like I said, state roads and other, um. So except for providing the exemption for equipment requirements off-road vehicles apply to a local two-lane road that is open to public and is designated by the road authority jurisdiction of the road is opened off-road vehicles that are described in ours. So we actually do have the right to designate some things it looks like. So we need, I think we need to go into this further to test where you guys, you might want to think about more than just crossings, actually. So I would recommend we spend some real time parsing this out to see what's there. Because it looks like covered more than just crossing roads.
Oh, yeah.
You guys have some gravel roads or anything applicable to this, so.
And, and just as a word of caution, you mentioned Center Street? I'll tell you what, I don't hardly like to.
Yeah, Center, Center's pretty bad.
And in my local, I'm like, gosh, I can't see. So that would be a cautionary.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I cannot see, I have people way out there.
Way out there.
Yeah, they have several corners like that.
Why, why do we not like some of the other communities that I drive in have four-way stops? You come, you stop.
I think that has.
You're going to harden transportation, that's the only way you're going to be able to do that.
If Alteris can get one at their major junction there.
That's California, Caltrans. ODOT doesn't believe the Batwood deal. I think that's been suggested before and it's, but because you've got to make, your, your F Street's a major highway, it's, it's their jurisdiction, so.
Doesn't mean it can't.
We would lose our designation if we put a traffic light.
Yeah.
I can't even have a traffic light.
Yeah.
So you can't go there. I mean, that might be, that might be an option if you guys ever wanted to. I mean, that is.
But I'll put this on next agenda or whatever for a work session coming right up. Okay, so we start on.
Is it one down?
My car is.
Resolution 908 lease agreement for the egg farm.
And I have had.
Sit right away.
Pardon me. I have had, uh, our, our county attorney review the lease agreement. It's with.
Kelly Parton.
Kelly Parton.
It was put up for RFP, there's only.
One.
There was two, the other one dropped out, so he's the remainder. Um, it's only going to be harvesting this year's crop out of the egg farm. The school district already presently leases to Holiday Farm, Holiday Ranch's 25 CAP CAP pairs on that property. So. So it's just for getting the hay put up. And then the only other difference in previous years, we're actually paying him to get the hay cut. And then he has spread, first, he has spread first refused to buy it at a market price, which all of that funding from that hay goes directly to paying for FFA. So that's where those crops end up. And that's kind of, that's been the basic. It was when Justin Farrell was doing this, he was paying us and then he was selling the hay. And that quit a couple of years ago and then he terminated the lease this year. And that's why, and the crop's just about ready to, or it is, it is really ready to be, be cut. So, and this is actually only a 90-day lease, just to get it, the crop put up in 90, it'll probably take that long. Yes, they made it nine days, yeah. And actually, it's only one thing, it's just grass hay.
Right.
One, one cutting and then they pasture it.
Yeah, okay.
So.
And the school's got to hit that.
He's already planning on getting it the last weekend in July.
So we'll have the certificate before that, but I wanted to make sure we got it.
Right.
Move forward, so.
And he's got, he's of course got to make him liability insurance, he's got to make sure that he doesn't damage anything, he's got to leave it the same finish he found it. So all those protections we've always had in there are state. Basically, you're just bringing in a hay company. You're bringing in a custom hay outfit, basically, and it's a certain tonnage and, um, then a stack feed, which is pretty much standard. And I ran it, thankfully, the business manager of the high school is also a rancher, so I ran the prices faster and it's within market, what's going on with that, so.
So this benefits the school as well?
They own the land. That we have to discharge our eggs on that.
And this has been, this arrangement has been going on for years and this is how, one of the ways they funded up the family, it's been a partnership for a long time.
The contract with the school goes until 2027. So we still have some time, in our years, on that lease.
I would move we adopt.
I'm just wondering, I'm on the school bill as well, so.
How does this affect, how does this affect everyone? I don't know that it's a conflict because again, the school's in agreement with this, they've reviewed it as well.
And they aren't, man.
Turn it, I'm good.
I would move we adopt resolution number 908 in the matter of approving an agricultural lease for the ag farm and the Sewer Lagoon property.
Second?
I'll second that.
Motion favor?
Aye.
Motion for big carries? Next one? LOC Bolton?
No, it's just for information. I don't know if you have them get that online or see it online, but you can actually click on it and, and, or let me know what sessions you want to go to. There's tours and stuff, so, um, I was starting to register everybody Friday, but then I didn't know what tours you might want to go on to. So you can let, let us know as soon as possible when you're registered and, uh, yeah.
Smith and Turner Special Public Works Fund, 20 million?
Where are you at?
I was thinking.
Oh. I thought you scared me.
Me too, I was like, what?
Look, this Debbie looked at me, 20 million?
All right.
All right.
Statewide.
Statewide, yeah.
Next, the last thing on the, is the Seroptimus Park?
We, we've decided.
But you guys need to make it, you guys need to make it.
Well, we just gave the consent. We did, but that was in the work session, so now you need to just.
Yeah, since this gives you the, right, stick it on the agenda and make the motion. I would move we enter into, or have Roberta enter into the agreement with the Seroptimus Park with Pacific College or PP&L.
Yeah, for 10 years.
For 10 years.
Awesome.
Go ahead.
Motion favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good.
I have a guy, just.
Mayor Council Updates. Do they have anything? I don't.
I, I was looking at this. I'm trying to figure out my calendar. I'm trying to figure out my calendar, frankly. July fifteenth is the races and the tip a cop dinner, and I was thinking of the helicopters. July twenty-second is the Chuck Wagon, um, flag thing.
Riding by East Street.
Oh, is that occupied?
Yeah.
It's been the same day.
That's kind of a nice thing. August fourth is the ceremony for Jessica Ellison, is that when they're going to, to rename the highway stretch for her? And then August fifth is the Turd Outback. So what am I missing?
Oh my gosh, we can add more to it.
The clips.
The clips, but that's August twenty-first.
Yeah.
If you can build flags, ceremony.
Yeah, the, the flag with the Chuck Wagon on the twenty-second at ten, wasn't it?
Right, and then we have East Street that day starting at noon, so we'll have the barbecue and the bands, the car shows, there's about eighty car shows signed up so far.
Really?
Yeah. It's going to be Maricent Lane. That's what everybody goes. That's what I moved, yeah. So maybe we'll get sixty, but that's a lot better.
The thirty-niner does the barbecue.
Yeah.
It's three hamburgers, direct hamburgers, and.
And I take.
Hamburgers on the lower street.
But yeah, what's it?
Hamburgers, hot dog for five dollars with chips and a drink. I think bowl of water.
Then they had some music down there for the fellas, I don't know, I don't know, yeah, Oracle stuff.
Yeah, we've been down there before, but they decided they didn't like our music or anything, so.
They wanted fifties and sixties.
When is the thing with the theater?
Oh, that's the eighteenth of August. That's the, what are they called, Rio?
Rico.
You know Rico.
Oh, Rico Nova?
Yeah, we had the outer on the eighteen, so that would be fun, that's a Friday night, I think. It is a bit too summer, what else is going on, I think. Affair, but.
We're already getting there. Already started, got, got to start planning.
And are tickets on sale now for the concert and everything?
They are.
Anybody have anything else?
Free lunch in the park, make sure, tell people.
Right, for kids.
Start today eleven, yeah.
Actually, it's eighteen. I was going to say it goes to eighteen.
They did have, have they had to turn out, Stan?
Yeah.
I served last Thursday and Friday, Thursday we had fifty, and Friday we had about twenty, Friday was a little low, but. Yes, they're averaging anywhere between sixty and right in the fifties.
Is that just that one location or?
Yes, that's the one location. They also, they're doing about five a day in New Pine Creek, and then there was another location, but I don't remember what.
One side.
Yeah, I didn't hear how many they were serving out there. But they, they said five or so in New Pine Creek, and then.
It's a good deal.
Okay, if we have nothing else, we will adjourn the meeting at five eighteen.
So who's your group?
I know that David and Richard, I can't remember the third one right now.